So when it's up, it's off. When it's down, it's on.
Hello?
Oh, when it's up, it's on.
Okay. Hello?
Off.
I don't think my...
I'm not one of those really fancy ones.
No, I do, yeah.
Good evening. On behalf of the Petaluma Argus Courier, the American Association of University Women, and the League of Women Voters of Sonoma County, I'd like to welcome you to a forum for the Petaluma City School District Board of Trustees. I'm Pam Granger, and I'll be your moderator for the next 60 minutes. Tonight, you're only going to get a brief look, kind of a snapshot, of these fine three candidates. We'll give you sort of a face to go with a name. We're on a tight time schedule, and it'll be so tempting occasionally to want to clap or hoot in support of something you hear. But if you'll just hold on until the very end, it'll help us to keep things moving. So let's get started. Overseeing Southern California's largest school district is a great responsibility. Serving 7,400 students, the Petaluma City School District employs 875 people in 15 schools with a $77 million budget. The district is governed by a seven... excuse me, a five-member board. On November 8, voters in the district will be selecting two of these three candidates to fill positions on the Board of Trustees. One of the vacancies is created by the retirement, as it were, of Troy Sanderson. With 10 years of service, Troy's experience will be missed, and we'd like to take this opportunity to thank him for putting in this time. We will miss his extensive institutional knowledge. Before introducing the candidates, I want to outline the format for this evening's program. Earlier, the candidates drew lot for the order in which they're seated, and that will be the order in which they speak on a rotating basis. The first one to speak will be the last one to close. I'll begin the question-and-answer period with questions prepared by the evening's sponsors, and we should have an opportunity for two or three questions from the audience as well. You perhaps have been offered a 3x5 card on which to put a question. Raise your hand if you'd like to have one at this time, and you haven't received it. We'll collect them, and then our volunteers will take a look at them for duplication. Following each the question-and-answer period, each candidate will give a one-minute closing remark. Now, because there's a forum for city council immediately following, when we're done, we're going to do a quick change up here on the dais to keep on schedule, and you're certainly invited and encouraged to stay for that as well. Timekeepers this evening. I don't see our timekeeper from the League of Women Voters, so I'm going to ask Tiffany Renee and Sheila Garvey if you will please keep track. The answers will be one minute, and if you'll just raise your hand when there's 30 seconds left to talk, and then also again when it's time to stop talking. You know, finish your sentence and cut it off. So our candidates to my left are Frank Lynch, Ellen Webster, and Mary Johnson. Thank you so much for being here, and we're going to start with our first questions. And Frank, we'll have you head off. What do you see as the role of a Board of Education member, and what skills and experience do you bring to the table?
Well, thanks, Pam. That's a good question. I think the most important thing for everybody to understand is that you're a Board Member when you're seated with the other four Board Members. Otherwise, you're just a private citizen. So when you convene at a Board meeting and have discussions, and there's a call for a question or a vote, then you're acting as a Board. So that's the most important thing right there. My years of experience, I have 36 years in public education, four years in private education, classroom teacher, taught English, became an assistant principal at a high school in Carmel, and then became principal at Carmel Middle School for five years. And then in 1986, I had the good fortune of being able to land a job here in Petaluma as a principal for Petaluma High School for nine years. It was the fastest nine years I've ever spent before in my life, and it was just delightful. And then from that point on, in '85... I'm sorry, '95, I started to do superintenances. And unfortunately, they were superintenances throughout the state. King City, which is in South Monterey County. I did two years at West Sonoma County High School District. I did four years in Del Norte County as a superintendent for Crescent City and as a county superintendent. And then the last superintendency I did was in Santa Barbara County at Lompoc Unified School District, the home of Vandenberg Air Force Base. And after my contract was up, I came back to Petaluma because my wife and I had decided that we would want to retire here, and we were fortunate enough to be able to keep our house. So I think I bring years of experience. I've got a lot of learning to do because I've always been on the other side. I have been a Board Member for YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club, so I do have experience that way.
Thank you very much. And same question. How about you, Ellen?
Hello, I'm Ellen Webster. The role of a Board Member is basically budgetary, hiring a superintendent, and working... dealing with personnel. I have 27 years in education, starting at Petaluma High School as a student teacher under Mr. Lancher. I currently teach at Tamales High School. I am an English teacher and a drama teacher. I have taught drama K through 12, so I've had experience with all ages of students. I have budgeting experience. I've hired a superintendent. I've worked on the... I've been on a budget committee, so I have a pretty good understanding of how school budgets work. I have two children that have gone through the Petaluma City Schools, and I have two grandchildren who are currently in elementary school. So my time's up.
Thank you very much. And how about you, Mary? What do you see as a role of a Board Member, and what do you bring to that role?
Did I push the right button? Awesome. Before talking about this, I wanted to just take a moment to thank the AAUW, the League of Women Voters, and the Argus Courier for hosting this event tonight. I think it's really important that our community has organizations such as these to work through the political process. And it's just... I just wanted to say thank you for that. So the role of a Board Member is supporting the superintendent, managing the budget, and setting policy. So I have had the pleasure since March to be a sitting Board Member at Petaluma City Schools, and I have had lots of opportunity in that time to not only support the superintendent, approve this year's budget, and work on different policy. Prior to that Board position, I have been a mom for, I guess, almost 22 years now. But while I was working, I worked at a great big Fortune 50 company where I managed a $500 million P&amp;L.
Thank you very much. So let's take a spin around a different... let's go a different direction. Every industry has its acronyms, and we know that the education sector, nobody does it better than them. So as a critical component of the new Local Control Funding Formula, the LCFF, every school district must engage parents and the community to create a Local Control and Accountability Plan, the LCAP. The LCAP, that's the Local Control and Accountability Plan, is intended to be a comprehensive planning tool to help all students succeed. Parents, families, and community members are to have a voice in the development and evaluation of the school district's LCAP plan through the year. So starting with Ellen, do you agree with the Petaluma School District LCAP goals? And what changes, if any, would you propose?
Well, first of all, one of the changes I would like to address would be the use of technology in the schools. I think that there's a lot of money being spent, and I would like to explore that in a deeper manner. In addition, I think that the idea of... to quote someone, I... to quote, "There should be no child left behind." And I think that that needs to be the ultimate responsibility of an LCAP, of a budget, is to make sure that all students are safe, that they're achieving, that they are being prepared either for the next grade, for high school, for college, or for the workforce. And so that's where I believe the emphasis should be in any budget.
Perfect. Thank you. Mary, same question.
I want to... I'll quickly go through the LCAP. I completely agree with the LCAP for the Petaluma City Schools and what we're doing. The first goal in our LCAP is that students need access to 21st century learning environment and tools. To that end, and to achieve this, the district provides students with qualified teachers, appropriate instructional materials, and iPad and quality facilities. Number two, all students will graduate from Petaluma City Schools college and career-ready. To achieve this, we're working towards students attaining grade-level mastery in English and math, providing appropriate career and technical education courses, and providing professional development to our fabulous teachers. We have room to improve on that goal. Petaluma community will be involved and included in the education of all Petaluma School students, including the decision-making process. To this goal, there's a regularly updated parent portal, which we call ARES, for grades and information. Also, number four, all students will be engaged and supported to meet the rigor required to be a 21st century student. The focus here is the importance of the individual student attendance leading to outstanding graduation rates.
Thank you. And Frank, do you agree with the Petaluma City Schools LCAP goals? And what changes, if any, would you propose?
Well, I think we need to go back a little bit in the history of why LCAP came about and LCFF. It was an initiative really proposed by Jerry Brown, who was kind of frustrated by the way that we spent revenues within a school district. And he came up with a plan, working with the state legislators, to come up with something that would make sure that there was funding available for all students, that it just wasn't a matter of a zip code or demographics where students, if they happened to live in a high-wealth district, that they would receive a lot of money, and if you're in a low-wealth district, that you wouldn't receive quite as much. So the goal of doing that, I think, is there. It needs to be tweaked a little bit. But what I see with Petaluma City School is that they are following the spirit of that, which is to make sure that funding is going to be available for all students. The hard part for people to understand is if you don't have a lot of students that are impacted socio-economically, or if you don't have a lot of foster or homeless youth, or you don't have a high Hispanic population, that actually the money that you're getting from the state might not match the money in surrounding districts.
Thank you very much. And so with this next question, Mary, if you'll please start. As technology implementation, such as the one-to-one computer devices for kids increases, how will you support educators in receiving training for technology use in the classroom?
One of the things that Petaluma City Schools has done really nicely with the iPad rollout is last year, they had something... another acronym called a TOSA, Teachers on Special Assignment, whose sole responsibility last year was to be out in the field, feet on the street, teaching the teachers about using the iPad. And those TOSAs, as they were out, discovered the things that... the same things that you would expect from any iPad rollout. There were early adopters who were excited about having iPads in their classroom, and there were less-excited people about having iPads in their classroom. And everyone was given the opportunity to learn, grow, and develop, and find the programs that worked well for them.
Thank you, Frank. How do you recommend supporting educators and receiving training for technology in the classroom?
Well, I think the major goal for most adults is to try to keep up with the kids because they seem to be the ones that have the handle on all the technology that's out there. I think there's a lot of stuff that we need to take a look at as far as technology is concerned. I think we kind of need to be on the cutting edge of vetting what's taking place within the classroom. I also believe that it's extremely important that we involve staff in whatever decision we happen to make as far as technology is concerned. I think the more that teachers become part of the decision-making process, the more comfortable they are with it, the more training that we can provide to them, the better implementation of not only technology but curriculum programs will benefit from their involvement in developing the program.
Thank you. Ellen, how about you?
Well, if we are preparing students to be 21st century citizens, technology is a vital part of that. And professional development, as Frank said, is also vital, and it should be up to the staff and the teachers to have a say in their professional development because, after all, they're the ones that are going to be using it, implementing it in the classroom. I also think that we have to be careful that we don't exchange technology for basic learning that the kids need, especially in the early grades. There's a lot of skills that, in my experience, that I've observed, I teach freshmen, that they don't develop because they've been on iPads forever. I see it with my grandchildren, where they speak and they write in Twitterland, which is, what, 140, I think? I'm done. One minute is not very long.
An ongoing challenge. I apologize for that. Well, let's hone your skills. We'll circle right back around with Frank. An article in Forbes several years ago observed that the hardest segment of the workforce for employers to staff at this time with skilled talent hasn't been registered nurses or engineers or even web designers. Their article suggests it's been skilled trades, the welders, electricians, machinists, et cetera, that are so prevalent in manufacturing and construction and, in my age, group retiring. So do you think that our current vocational classes in high school prepare students to address this shortfall? What sort of programs would you begin or end to offer courses to students in line with district graduation requirements?
I think the only way I can really answer that is I think we need to have a real good conversation at the district level and with our adult community in saying, "What is success in terms of students?" If we keep putting success, meeting the A through G requirements, and you've got to go to Berkeley or Stanford or Harvard or Brown as the only gauge for success, then I think we're missing out on a huge part of our student population who can be successful in what used to be called VOC Ed programs. Because I agree. I mean, where are we going to get carpenters and electricians and plumbers and people that are manufacturing? We need to be able to produce that. We need to honor labor. We need to honor the fact that kids come to us with a variety of skills, and not all of the skills are academic. And we need to praise them for taking that chance. Can we do better? Sure, we can. I wish we had, you know, as many programs as we possibly offer. But I think we can continue to do the job that we're doing. I think at the secondary level, schools are doing a good job of providing programs, and we need to continue to do so.
Again, let me restate so that you can follow this. Do you think, Ellen, that our current VOC Ed classes in high school prepare students to address the shortfall of people in the skilled trades? What types of programs would you begin or end in order to get to that goal?
Well, I think VOC Ed is vitally important. Not all kids are going to be chairman of the Board. Some of them, like Frank said, we need welders. We need all kinds of physical workers. And what we do at our schools, we have something called pathways. And what that does is it allows students, especially at Tamales, agriculture's really big. So it allows students to go on a pathway that, while they're still getting their academic classes, they're still taking English and math and science, but it's also allowing them to put an emphasis on the pathway that they want to go. So instead of taking biology, they'll take ag biology or ag mechanics. And so what that allows students to do is prepare to enter whatever workforce they want to enter into, be it college or to go directly into a vocational program, do vocational training, and then enter the workforce that way. And we have to meet the needs of all students, not just the academics.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Mary?
Thank you. That's an excellent question. We have this exact situation going on at our house. We have a senior who thinks he wants to be a plumber, and he's so embarrassed to tell people that he wants to be a plumber at school because everyone's filling out their college applications, and he's thinking that he might want to, you know, do a program or, you know, do something at Butte and maybe even, you know, maybe be a welder and go to work at PG&E, trying to figure that out. So do I think there's a need in our school district for those students? Absolutely. And one of the ideas that I've had in just thinking about it, you know, we have a couple really outstanding programs that we could expand... expand, that's the word I'm looking for, expand upon. And at Petaluma High, the ag program there is fabulous. And working with that, to leverage that ag program into a school of industrial arts where kids who really want to work outside of going to college to be a CEO would just be a fabulous thing for us to look at as a district. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on, you know, we are privileged that Petaluma voters have supported school bond measures. Are you satisfied, Ellen, starting, with project spending accountability? And how should the district be getting the word out about the results of that spending?
I am satisfied. I think it's important to vote for school bonds. I think that it is also very important for the district to be transparent in the way they spend their money so that people know where their tax dollars are going. I mean, we all pay property taxes, and every time we vote on a school bond, it raises them. If the district is not transparent, if you don't know where the money's go... if the public doesn't know where the money's going, that eliminates trust in the next school bond that comes along. People go, "Why should I vote for that? I don't know." What did they do with the last bond, with the last amount of money? So it's vital that bonds are passed, and it's also vital that the district is transparent in the way they spend the taxpayers' money.
Thank you. Absolutely. The question is, are you satisfied with the project spending accountability? So accountability and how the district is getting the word out about the spending?
I am absolutely satisfied with the district accountability with spending. If you'd like to come take a look at the Casa Grande High School track, it's outstanding and amazing. There's other projects that are in the works. The city also... the city schools, we also have an advisory committee, and the advisory committee reviews the bond spending. The bond spending is published online in the budget. It's out there for people to see. And I think that our accounting of it and the works that we're doing with it are excellent. So thank you for asking that.
And Frank, accountability? And are we getting the word out about how we're spending that money?
Well, I live with somebody who happens to be on a bond oversight committee, so I get firsthand information. But I know that that information is open to the public. I think it's just a matter of the district making sure that people understand that those oversight committee meetings are available for people to attend. I'll echo what Mary said. If you want to get online and find out how it's going, I think it would be kind of good to do an open house sometime during the course of the year to invite people to come out and actually see what's happening with their bond dollars. A very easy thing to do, and I think we need to do it. I'm sure principals at their sites will take parents around and let them, "Hey, this is, you know, what's happened within the classroom. This is something good." Or, as Mary pointed out, you know, the track in the field that's over Casa is something that everybody needs to be proud of. But there are a lot of things in the pipeline where I really believe that the voters are going to be very proud of the way that the district is handling these expenditures.
Thank you very much. You know, along with getting bonds approved, Petaluma is very fortunate to have many involved and engaged parents. Some parental involvement, however, is initiated as a reaction to a perceived problem. A group called Petaluma Parents Against Drugs, P-PAD, formed as a reaction to youth prescription drug abuse. They are asking for return of resource officers back to the two Petaluma campuses. So the question is, do you think that school resource officers would result in safer schools with less drug use? And would you be willing to allocate district funds to reinstate school resource officers? That would be Mary.
The city of Petaluma came to Petaluma City Schools and offered up one and a half school resource officers. And that was just before I became a Board Member, and my understanding of the finances of that was that there was not the money in the budget without eliminating teachers to pay for a school resource officer. Do I think that having a resource officer on campus is the answer at each of the schools? I'm not sure about that. Do I think that education of our students about the dangers of drugs is something that we should be doing? And I agree with that. I think it's a multi-pronged approach. I think that having the school involved, having the parents primarily involved, having the police involved, having the medical community involved. I think if everyone's involved in educating our children about the dangers of prescription drugs, we'll get somewhere with this.
Thank you, Frank. Do you think SROs would result... school resource officers would result in safer schools with less drug use and violence? And would you be willing, as a Board Member, to allocate money to reinstate SROs?
I think the SRO program is a valuable resource, but it's not the intent of the SRO program for policemen to be on campus and to, you know, check kids out for drugs or walk around and, you know, talk to the kids about violence. It's simply their presence in a uniform so kids feel comfortable about having a police officer there. If the funds were available, I would say that it would be really nice to be able to do that. In my tenure as principal of Petaluma High School, we were fortunate enough to have an SRO, and the person developed a good relationship with the kids, and they felt comfortable with him. But it begs the bigger question. What are we going to do as a community about this? You know, it's not just a school problem, and it's not just going to be taken care of by having an SRO on campus. It's kind of what the culture of the community is. And it's not, it's not a, you know, castigating remark about Petaluma, because it happens in every community that I'm aware of. But we need to, you know, really come together as a community and have some serious meetings, particularly with this group, and say, what are we going to do?
Thank you very much. Ellen?
I don't think that, I think, well, SROs are good. Having a presence, even if it's not every day, but just so that students see that police officers are not their enemy, is important. I don't think it should come down to a resource officer versus a teacher. I think that there's other more creative ways to deal with it. I also think it's a huge community issue. I think parents need to talk to their kids and have their eyes open to what kids are doing. I think that it needs, so it needs to happen in the schools, it needs to happen in the homes, and it needs to happen in the community in general. So, because prescription drug use is a problem in this country, especially even with adults who tend to take too many drugs. There's more than just prescription drugs, though. I mean, there's the issues of gangs, there's, my time's up.
Thank you so much. We're going to take a look. I've got several audience questions that have a common theme. Other parent groups have expressed concern about potential harmful effects on children by the use of pesticides and Wi-Fi radiation with the new wiring for schools. How would you propose to analyze these and future issues in order to create board policies and regulations to keep the kids' health and welfare up front? And Frank, that's to you first.
Well, I think it's really got to start at the beginning, I mean, before the whole process starts to unfold in front of us, is that we need groups to come together and say, hey, look at, this is a decision that we're contemplating, that we think we're going to be making a decision about the implementation of Wi-Fi. And sit down with a group and say, hey, what are we going to do about it? Let's vet it, let's find out what the pros and the cons are. Same thing about pesticides. I think it's important that we bring parents together, maybe back to school night or whatever it is, and let people know when the implementation is going to take place, the fact that the schools will be posted many days in advance of whatever spraying takes place. But also let them know what we're using as a school district. So I think getting the information out is really important, bringing people together to talk, to develop a relationship and develop trust. I think that's really, really important.
Thank you, Ellen. Did you follow that?
Once again, I return to transparency. And if you're going to ask, if you're going to have a meeting, it's really important that you have parents there, you have translators there, so Spanish-speaking parents know what's going on, as well as, as not, as English-speaking parents. I think that it's really, it's important for our kids to be safe and healthy in our schools. And that comes down to pesticides, it comes down to radio waves. And if there's not an open discussion and education about what these things do, why should we be careful about this, then everybody is dissatisfied. So if there's an openness and a transparency, then people are able to express their opinions, know that they're being heard, and to understand the rationale behind any kind of decision that the school board makes.
Thank you. Mary, same question?
I've had the opportunity to work with individuals recently representing different points of view regarding technology in our classrooms. I have not had any experience with people with pesticide issues. But with technology, these conversations that I've had have resulted in solid and specific district action. The district recently adopted iPad user guidelines for our students. And in addition, recognizing that there's controversy in the installation of wireless access points in classrooms, the district commissioned a study by our insurance carrier, the Redwood Empire Schools Insurance Group, or RUSI. That study, which was distributed to the board at a recent meeting, concluded that there was no danger to students from the wireless installations because the radio frequencies that they emit are several orders of magnitude below regulatory limits. Consequently, the study recommended that no further steps needed to be taken by the district to address this matter.
Thank you. Next question. Totally different direction. We're going to travel with this question. So, let's see, I think we're on Ellen first. Field trips and other extracurricular activities are currently curtailed at some, if not all schools, elementary schools, due to lack of transportation resources. It appears, according to this parent, that if you can't, if parents can't provide transportation, the trip doesn't happen. Do you have a solution to this dilemma?
Well, as a teacher, I think field trips are vital. I take students to Washington TZ every year, I take them to museums, and I guess we're lucky, our district's basic aid, so we have a little bit more money. But I would, I think that it's a huge liability to have parents drive. And so I think that charging for field trips might be one way, although I realize that there are some students that simply can't afford it, kids that are on free and reduced lunch, their parents cannot be asked to pay for things. But there has to be a way to finance field trips. There's so much learning to be done outside of the classroom that financially, it needs, I believe it needs to be a priority. And again, there's creative ways to finance things when you really want them.
Thank you. Mary?
That's an excellent question. And again, I'm sorry to hear that there's field trip issues, although I do know at Casa there was a field trip issue. I got a call just yesterday from the band director, asking me if I could please find a truck and help get the jazz band to another school for a field trip for one of the kids with equipment and that. So I've borrowed my husband's truck, and I'm headed out there. So I, at this point, I mean, again, I didn't realize there was an issue with field trips on campuses. I, you know, I think the teachers pick up the phone, they make the phone calls, they make it work. And I don't have a solution better than that at this point, but I'd certainly be willing to find ideas and listen to people's ideas about how to do that.
Thank you, Frank. Field trips, take it.
Audubon Canyon Ranch has a program for 4th and 5th graders where they invite kids to, first of all, they do a presentation within the classroom, and second of all, they invite the kids to go on a hike, and it's all free. It's just a matter of contacting Audubon Ranch, so it's a matter of us getting the information out to 4th and 5th grade teachers that this is something that's doable. The other part is using PEF grants. I'm sure if a teacher really wants to do a field trip and said it's going to cost 750 bucks, and they wrote one of those impact grants, that they would be able to get that money to be able to fund it. The other part, it's invaluable. I mean, everybody in this room probably had the experience of maybe a science camp or outdoor ed camp or whatever, and that just goes in the back of your mind and say, hey, that's one of the best experiences I've ever had. So we need to do as much work as we possibly can to provide those opportunities. You know, like Ellen, you know, taking kids back for close-up, and other teachers taking kids, you know, on trips to Europe and stuff like that, it's all funded by the parents and the kids, though. But at the district level, there are ways that we can work with interested parties to provide those trips.
Thank you very much. Right, so now we're going to leave the trip behind. Mary, we're going to start with, in recent years, there has been some degree of contention between the, some teachers in the Petaluma City School District and the board. What actions do you see you taking, or would you recommend that the board as a whole take to sort of bridge that divide?
Contention in anyone's workplace makes it difficult. And the way that I see for Petaluma City Schools and the teachers to bridge that is open communication. And open communication is clear, and where questions are answered, where concerns are addressed, and where moving forward with a plan that is solid is what is sought. So that's what I would do and say.
Thank you, Frank. How would you bridge the divide between the board and teachers?
Well, I think it comes with trust, relationship building, consistency. I think when I look back historically on the school district, when things were, you know, moving along, there's always going to be contention. That's why they call it negotiations, by the way. I mean, people have sides, and even getting the yes, there are positions that are being held. But the reason the district did such a good job in labor relations for a long period of time is that there was continuity. People knew what to expect. People trusted in one another. And that's the most important thing, and it takes time to be able to do that. And I think the most important thing you can do during negotiations of any sort is to listen. You know, you just got to spend your time, listen to other people's side, and not walk in with an agenda saying, you know, I've already got my mind made up, before the discussions actually take place. So I get down to relationship building and trust and complete transparency.
Ellen?
I've been on several negotiating teams, and if there is no trust, negotiations usually come to a standstill. The other issues that need to be thought about are priorities. What's the district's priorities? Where do they want to spend their money? Because that's often where the contentions are, is, so you will see a district humming along really well, and then all of a sudden, there's a budget issue, and all of a sudden, people are angry, they want what they want, and it becomes, it becomes difficult to negotiate in a manner that's going to solve problems. But if there's consistency and trust, and everybody's clear about what the priorities are, which should be the students in the classroom, then I think there's a way to heal those rifts.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So we're going to start with Frank. The, because, thank you, the, the district has elementary schools and high schools, so you have to give some thought to both of those. But there was an audience, there is an audience question that asks, how do you deal with equity between schools? We know that the constituent families look differently amongst schools. How do you address that as a board member?
Well, I think it's basically trying to get people to understand what educational finance is all about. I mean, there is, you know, a revenue limit that we get from the state government, and everybody needs to understand what the per pupil spending is that we receive. Plus, they need to understand the federal money that we get. But once you get that understanding, you go back to the LCFF and LCAP, because there's money allocated to the schools based upon their population. And that population looks different at a lot of different schools. The faces are different, the languages might be different. So within the LCFF, the schools, in theory, should be able to take their money, develop a program, and match the expenditures against the program that they've established as a school community, which means involvement of staff, administration, parents, and classified to figure out what they're going to be doing with those dollars. So I think whether it's a high school or it's an elementary, you can bridge that gap if people have an understanding of what the sources of revenue are and how the community needs to be involved in it.
Thank you. Ellen, dealing with equity issues between schools?
Well, first of all, I work in a unified district, and it's amazing how wildly different the needs and priorities are between elementary and high school. And so there has to be equity, and there has to be a way to figure that equity out. Funding comes from a lot of different sources. Elementary schools are open to different types of funding than high schools are. So, and it also comes down to, it also comes down to languages, free and reduced lunch, socially, economically disadvantaged. And so all those things have to be balanced. And so sometimes it may not look equitable, but there's a lot of different pots in the education budget. And some of those pots are solely for a certain group of kids, or therefore, staff development and the needs of the elementary school is different in staff development than the high school, and I'll stop.
Thank you, Mary. Equity between schools.
One of the, one of the ways that we can improve the equity between our schools is to prioritize needs. And I think we're doing that nicely with our bond funds. There are schools that need a new track, there are schools that need a new, you know, new roofs, there are schools that need different things. From the student perspective, the PEF impact grants are outstanding. Our parent-teacher organizations, our PTAs do fundraising at sites, and our site funding, so, yeah.
Thank you. So given that we're going to have a candidate forum with Petaluma City Council next, this is sort of a timely question. How important, starting with Ellen, is it to have a working relationship between the school board and the city council? Is there a, is that something where the schools would benefit? And how would you facilitate that relationship?
Well, the city council's made up of the community. The community votes for city council members, the community votes for board members. So I think it's essential that they have a positive working relationship. Their jobs and the decision-making they do are often very different. School boards are dealing with students and families and parents, whereas the city council's sort of overseeing the, what goes on in the city. So I think that it's important that they, they know each other, that they work together on issues that they have in common. I don't think that should be too difficult to ask. I mean, we're not, we're not LA. We're small enough so that we should be able to work together when necessary.
Thank you very much. Frank, did you deal with that question? Oh, Mary. Mary gets a choice, sorry.
On the Petaluma City Schools Board right now, Troy Sanderson has really been the person who has taken the active role in communicating with the city council. And we are definitely going to miss him because that communication bridge is imperative. We have sports fields that the city uses, we have a swimming pool, we have all sorts of things that we share and have in common. And that is definitely something that is a relationship that needs to be had.
Thank you. And now Frank.
Currently, in our transportation yard, we're doing some servicing on city-owned vehicles, and that was an arrangement that was made several years ago. And I think Troy might have been the impetus behind that. If you look at the baseball fields that are up at Petaluma Junior High, that was kind of a joint venture, where, you know, the community needed the additional baseball fields, the school district had property, so there was a real good working relationship there. I think those things can be expanded on, and once again, I think it comes with meeting with people, talking about common interests, what can be done, understanding the constraints on both the school district and on the city budget, and on how things can be handled. But I think the city council, along with the board members, would be more than willing to sit down once a year and have a joint meeting and talk and say, hey, you know, how can we help one another on this? Where are we struggling? And just one parting shot, I think we need to have a real strong conversation because we're going through something that's going to be a downer for all of us, and that is decreasing student enrollment based upon unaffordable housing in this community. And that's an issue the city council wants to go through, and I know the school board is going to want to study also.
Thank you very much. So, Mary, the, this is a volunteer job, and in case people forget, the, I mean, you don't even get that whopping $5 a meeting that they get at the city council. So however... city council. So however, to stay in touch with your constituent probably requires some sort of plan of action. What's your plan of action to remain connected with the various school sites and their families?
Since, since becoming a board member in March, I have visited most of our school sites many, multiple times. It has been my sincere pleasure to be a feet-on-the-street board member, where I see the classrooms, I see our administration, I see our students in their environment, which is learning. I am committed to spending the time doing that. I'm committed to making sure that I know absolutely what's, what's going on out there at our schools. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Frank?
I would echo what Mary said. I think that, you know, just being available, being out, being familiar with the school sites, being able to walk in and out of classrooms based upon, you know, your prior arrangement with the principal, so you just don't show up unannounced and decide that you're going to take a tour of the school. I think that's real important. I think teachers need to know that, that board members really care. And, and you care by, by being present and you care by listening to people. So it would be my goal, elected to the board, that I would do everything I possibly can to visit at least one school a week. And based upon my time schedule and my wife's desire to get me out of the house at certain times, I think I would be able to fulfill that.
Thank you. And Ellen?
Well, at the risk of sounding like an echo chamber, visit, visiting schools is essential. And it's not just during the day. It's attending graduations. It's attending open houses or back-to-school nights. It's also, as a board member, making sure that people know you're willing to listen to them. If there's an issue, you're there to, to hear about it. At, you know, you're a board member when you're sitting with the other board members. But you're also a concerned community member when you're, when you're not with the board members. And so you have to be open to be, to listen to people, to hear what's going on. You can't necessarily solve everybody's problems, but you can at least listen and be aware. So it's listening, it's visiting schools, it's going to school events like plays and all those other things that happen. And it's just being a, a face that is known and friendly.
All right. It's the time you've been waiting for, near the end. So we'd like to give you an opportunity to give a one-minute sort of summary. Tell the kind folks here and at home why you should be their choice on November 8. Mary, let's start with you and we'll work backwards.
Thank you. Again, it's truly my honor to serve on the Board of Trustees. My top priority is doing what's best for students. I was appointed in March, and since then, I've worked diligently to get up to speed on the inner workings of the district and how to best be of service in fulfilling my role as a trustee. Again, as I said, I've visited nearly every school in the district to see our classrooms, teachers, and administration in action. I'm committed to supporting our entire team from a feet-on-the-street perspective. Plus, it's always my genuine pleasure to see what students are learning. Looking forward, I'm committed to working with the superintendent and the board to address declining enrollment, balance our budget, and increase the number of graduating students that are college and career-ready. In March, I went from three kids to 7,500, and I'm committed to doing what's best for all of them. Your vote for me is a vote for the children of Petaluma, and I thank you for the opportunity to be of continued service to our education community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen? Yes, we'll go backwards.
I've never been a board member, but I do have the experience to fill this position successfully. In my 27 years in education, I have hired superintendents, worked on budgets, and listened to and problem-solved with all stakeholders. As a teacher, I've worked with parents and students. I've worked with teachers, board members, and administrators in my experience as a negotiator and a union president. I have taught all grades, K through 12. I will be a strong board member with the skills necessary to be successful. Listening, an ability to absorb and analyze complex information, expertise in educational practices, and knowledgeable in educational budgets, which are different than anybody's budget in the world. I look forward to serving the community and the schools. Thank you for your time and your vote.
Thank you. And Frank?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody who is responsible for putting this evening on. This is a great opportunity. I think the community is really blessed with three people that are running for two seats, that really have their heart in the right place. There's no hidden agenda. They want to do service for the, the kids in the school district. They're going to do the best job that they possibly can. So I think that's a real bonus. I'm not better than the other two candidates that are up here. I think we all have different strengths that we can bring to the table. I think we have different points of view that we can bring to the table. And I think that's a nice thing to have. I'm hoping that, you know, my years of experience will play off when I, if I get elected and sit as a board member. My, my current job is an adjunct faculty member for the University of San Francisco out of Santa Rosa, working with teachers in the credentialing program and master's program. I think that brings a little something to the table. And my work with student teachers, as I do student-teacher observations along with Ellen, which she does for Sonoma State, are all strengths that we can bring. So thank you for your consideration.
Perfect. So for over 50 years, the American Association of University Women has sponsored Petaluma candidate debates, very often with our favorite partners, the League of Women Voters and the Argus Courier. We encourage informed and active participation in government. Because you're here tonight or watching from home, you clearly agree with us. This was just a snapshot of these fine candidates. Please visit their websites or give them a call to learn a little bit more. As we come to the close of the evening, stick around for an opportunity to learn more about the Petaluma Council candidates in the forum that follows immediately. This is the time I would like to thank these candidates for joining us for this evening. So please give them a round of applause. On behalf of AAUW and the League of Women Voters and the Argus, I ask you to remember, vote on or possibly before November 8. Thank you very much.